Moving on to the work session. Everybody get up here?
Mm hmm.
Okay. Uh, this is Admiral States Georgia Board of Mayor Commissioners. It's January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. It is now five forty nine. I'd call the meeting to order. Uh, we have an agenda before us to have a motion to adopt.
So move.
I'm gonna say that was Mike. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Lionel. Um, I'll never say I.
Hi.
Okay, uh, first item of discussion, future of public works program. This manager.
Yeah, so um, as long as we get started, I'm I'm asking Chief Hess, who is our um, technology expert, to dim the lights for us. And say that everyone, uh, please turn their attention to uh, our projection screen uh, that we used to utilize back in the days. Um, nice.
See.
So I'm I'm debuting some new tech. They're hearing some new tech tonight. Have written notes. Yes, so let me tell you why. The beauty of the new tech is that I can edit if need be or write additional information if need be as I'm presenting. And I can't do that with a PowerPoint. So let's see how this works, shall we? Uh, before you dig into the notes that I have up there, I mean, let me provide some uh, initial context for how we got to the point that we got to. We used to have a reactive public works program. Uh, meaning that uh, all non sanitation related public works activities were conducted in a reactive way, uh, whether that be uh, by uh, a request of of the former city manager or uh, via conversations with residents. Uh, it did not necessarily uh, work for us moving forward uh, because we couldn't appropriately assess um, how much staff we needed. Uh, we couldn't appropriately assess how long it took to do certain activities, when we needed to do certain activities and so on. Uh, so um, once Marcel and uh, and Adrian came on board, uh, we moved to start rebuilding a public works program that makes sense and a public works program that allows us to perform all non sanitation related public works activities up to a standard that our community expects. We've talked about our current sanitation program and the issues we face by providing that service ourselves. Uh, being a small city uh, who cannot distribute the cost of a sanitation program amongst many properties, um, our fee relative to other communities is very high. Um, that's because the cost of to mobilize in order to provide the service is high. Uh, so the larger the city, the more you can defray that cost and the cheaper the 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 fee becomes. Um, so we get, and we had that working against us just from a cost per household. And uh, if you guys recall, the 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 presentation I I gave last year indicated that the fee we're charging now, which is five hundred and ninety six dollars a household, isn't large enough to actually cover the entire cost of the program. While it covers operating costs and some capital costs, it does not capture the full capital cost, especially the replacement of garbage trucks, which are, you know, high six. I mean, they're those, but the cost of those vehicles is well under the six figures each. And we have three garbage trucks that we deploy and all three of them are past what you would consider to be their useful life or more than seven years old. Uh, so if we were to retain sanitation service ourselves, we would need to replace those vehicles. Um, and it would, but we would need to raise the fee to approximately seven hundred and ten dollars per household in order to generate enough revenue to do that. We also, at the same time, uh, were determining exactly what it would cost us to perform all other public works related activities, like the non sanitation related activities. Um, that's landscaping, that's planting, that's pruning, that's uh, roadwork, sidewalk work, tree work, stormwater work, event support, facilities management and odd jobs. So we went down both roads simultaneously to try and determine what is the most cost effective path forward that solves the problems of ensuring that we are able to perform all public works duties in a manner that we're all satisfied with. And so in order to move forward with that process, uh, we found it necessary to um, generate an RFP uh, for contracting sanitation service out to a third party. Uh, so we did that. We wanted to see, you know, what that difference would be between a third party who is able to mobilize over the larger area can do it for. Um, and if that would save us any money, and if so, is it worth it to do and all of those questions? Uh, and then we had to figure out, okay, well, uh, if we move forward with contracting out sanitation service, what's it gonna take uh, from a personnel standpoint to perform all of those other activities? Uh, and what will it cost to do that too? Uh, do we have room in the budget? Are we going to have to recommend any miller trade increases? So on and so forth. Um, so, and I guess I need to, there we go. Okay, so um, you know, we know that uh, there were a couple of other issues associated with us providing our own sanitation that one of which we have um, addressed previously. Uh, that was backdoor service. Um, most, you know, I think that decision was largely informed by the humanistic element that we heard from our staff. Um, so we move, you know, away from backdoor service to curbside service. Uh, and I tried to articulate last year and I'll keep kind of repeating this refrain, which is um, what what that fee really goes for is not the type of service, whether it be curbside or backdoor. That fee is for us to provide the service. That's just what it costs us to mobilize and do it. One of the positive effects, aside from the humanistic effect of moving backdoor to curbside is that it's, it it takes less time to retrieve curbside trash than it does backdoor trash, which freed up um, our personnel to do other things. And it, and I think uh, the community noticed, because we got a lot of feedback that our yard waste collection this past year was pretty stellar. Uh, the reason for that is because we were able to allocate the appropriate amount of staff and plan the appropriate amount of time to do it. Uh, and that is a direct result of switching from backdoor service to curbside service. So um, the other impact, of course, was the fact that um, you know, callouts for being sick or injured uh, in the sanitation division is higher than any other division in the city. And because sanitation is a must do every day, we would constantly find ourselves having to uh, reallocate personnel from other public works activities to sanitation and therefore other public works activities weren't getting completed. All right, so all of that being said, let me start on the other public works activities side, the general fund side, okay? In the twenty twenty four budget, we have already appropriated for personnel for these activities, six hundred and eighty one thousand four hundred and two dollars. Our plan, and I will, please bear with me as I I articulate the whole plan, calls for the retention of ten employees within the public works department. We have identified the ten that we would prefer to retain. We are not going to mention those names now because um, the way we handle that is going to be largely dependent on the decisions y'all make. But if we were to retain those ten employees, the total compensation package of those ten employees uh, totals seven hundred and forty three thousand six hundred and twenty nine dollars. So we got a deficit, right? Um, of approximately, you know, sixty thousand dollars. Well, forty thousand of that total personnel cost uh, is already split between the general fund and the stormwater fund. So we can take that forty thousand and continue to allocate it to the stormwater fund as we already do. Uh, and then um, we also, and I'll, and I'll get to why in in a, in a kind of a later explanation, but we also have uh, are making a proposal whereby the city retains yard waste service and does not contract that out. And we believe the operating cost of yard waste service to be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, so that can be allocated away from the general fund to the sanitation fund. So you you're able to subtract out a hundred and ninety thousand dollars of that cost to other funds, which now puts us well within the amount we already have budgeted. However, this plan also calls for us to uh, release another RFP, which we will do, to contract out the bulk of landscaping services. Uh, after a lot of conversation, um, I, we have determined as a staff that we don't have the expertise necessary to perform a lot of our landscaping work. Um, and that we also would have a more difficult time holding um, staffers accountable to that level of expertise than we would if that were performed by a third party contractor. Now, we need to do an RFP for that, but Adrian was um, um, has relationships with some landscaping service companies that he trusts and went and got quotes from them so that we could re know the relative cost of of that contract. And we're fairly certain that a hundred and twenty thousand is is in the ballpark. Um, so you have to add that back in. So if you add back in a hundred and twenty thousand, you come up to six hundred and seventy three thousand six hundred and twenty nine, which is within the six hundred and eighty one four oh two that we already have budgeted. If we move forward with all this, it also eliminates the need for one of our contracts. We currently have a twenty three, twenty four thousand dollar contract annually for janitorial services, which will now be conducted as a non sanitation public works function. Uh, so you can subtract that out, uh, which leaves uh, six hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and twenty nine dollar impact to the general fund, which is a good, uh, you know, thirty one thousand dollars under budget. I say all that to say, if we move forward with this plan, uh, there will be no need to adjust the miller rate for this plan specifically. It all fits within the existing budget, uh, which was our goal. I mean, our goal going into this was not just, let's get everything done, but let's get everything done the right way at the lowest cost to our residents and business owners. Okay, so let me flip sheets.
Patrick, can we just make sure everyone out there understands that all of that up there? Basically, except for the yard waste part, doesn't have anything to do with the sanitation fund or actual picking up of solid waste garbage. Stuff. Make sure everyone understands this.
Non sanitation public works department function. Okay, so now that we know, we can perform the the recommended non sanitation plan within the existing budget, which was our goal. Now we see, but what impact to the sanitation fund will we have if we were to contract out? Okay. So um, we have three proposals uh, for um, service. Um, and who of the responders uh, proposed um, a fee for service that included the contractor paying the tipping fee? And if y'all recall, based on our tipping fee discussion last year, a tipping fee is an assessment per ton uh, by the county to use their landfill. And that tipping fee is thirty three dollars per ton. And last year, there was a proposal to triple that fee. Uh, but the county commission agreed to not touch the fee um, as long as the three municipalities that currently dump into their landfill continue to dump in their landfill. So based on the commissioners in office now, uh, we feel confident that any increase to the tipping fee is not going to happen in the next couple of years. It's in the offing and it won't be in triplicate at one time. So uh, fairly confident in that. Okay, so we had two proposals saying we'll pay the tipping fee and then one proposed asking us to pay the tipping fee. Um, and there are several reasons that we are recommending uh, one vendor over the other two. Uh, and I don't necessarily uh, believe it's fair uh, to the vendors to get into all of that detail in public. Uh, but here's why we're recommending the vendor we are. And the vendor we're recommending is Arrow. Um, Arrow is one of the vendors who propose, is the vendor who proposed us uh, absorbing the the tipping fee or paying for the tipping fee. So let me outline what their proposal looks like at the end of the day. So Arrow is proposing an eight dollar and twenty four cent monthly charge per household for residential solid waste collection. Okay, we, based on our trend analysis and the amount of waste that we've been dumping into the landfill over the last five years, we estimate, and this is a conservative estimation too, so we built in some cushions. We estimate that the cost of a tipping fee per household per month is five dollars. If you add the tipping fee cost to the proposed rate from the vendor, you get a monthly cost per household of thirteen dollars and twenty four cents. The next lowest proposal, that cost was nineteen dollars and sixty five cents. So a six and a half dollar difference, about about an eighty dollar difference per year per household. So you see why we're we're moving toward this vendor. Yes, sir.
Um, uh, residents just uh, let me know that the picture they're seeing is inverted somehow.
I think that must be their computer because on our screens it's. Yeah.
Is that true for everyone out there?
Yeah. Uh, so that's our feed.
That's it, that's our feed directly.
That is our feed directly, yeah. Okay, so um, our apologies if that's on our end, but I don't think it is and I don't know how to fix that. Anyway, um, okay, so fifteen dollars and twenty four cents a month per household for solid waste collection only, not recycling. If you multiply that by twelve, you get a hundred and fifty eight dollars and eighty eight cents is the annual household cost for solid waste. Arrow has also proposed a monthly fee for recycling per household at eight dollars and seventy two cents. You multiply that by twelve and you get an annual cost of recycling per household for a hundred and four dollars and sixty four cents. So if you add those two together, the solid waste cost per household and the recycling cost per household, you get a cost of two hundred and sixty three dollars and fifty two cents annually per household for solid waste and recycling. Now earlier, and I'm going to flip my page, I explained that our proposal includes a retention of yard waste service uh, and that we believe it would cost about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to operate yard waste annually. And we also believe it would cost about thirty thousand dollars for capital expenditures annually uh, for yard waste. For example, we need to replace a leaf vacuum and truck. It's about a hundred and fifty grand. We can use the finance program through through G and A like we did with the knuckle broom, like we did with the police vehicles, get a very low interest rate and finance that over a five year period. We get thirty grand a year to do that. We have a new leaf truck right off the bat. Okay, so you combine those two numbers and you get a hundred and eighty thousand dollars annually for yard waste. Divide that by the amount of households that we have, which is sixteen hundred and forty, and you get one oh nine seventy six as an annual cost per household for yard waste. So if you take the cost that Arrow would charge, which is two sixty three fifty two, and then you add the cost that it would, we would incur to perform yard waste services, which is a hundred and nine dollars and seventy six cents, the annual sanitation fee per household would run somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred and seventy three dollars. Our current fee is five hundred and ninety six dollars. So if you take our current fee, subtract the proposed new fee, that equates to an annual savings per household of approximately two hundred and twenty three dollars, which translates into approximately a one mil tax reduction. Um, so a significant benefit to households uh, where there is no impact to the general fund and we're able to perform all of the non sanitation public works functions in a professional fashion uh, with schedule and allocated bodies uh, and expertise um, associated with it. The caveat here is that this service presumes once weekly curbside instead of twice weekly curbside. Uh, but the vendor would issue uh, ninety five gallon carts, which you may see in other cities um, to each household uh, that they would um, you know, use their equipment to tip into the to the garbage truck on a once weekly basis at no cost to the homeowner. So that's included in the proposal. Um, Arrow has also pledged to provide, um, and this was a very important piece of our of our RFP and one of our vendors uh, declined. Uh, but um, we, they, they agreed to provide employment opportunity at a minimum of seventeen dollars an hour uh, to each employee that we are unable to retain. Um, so each of those employees would have the opportunity to go work for the contractor uh, at a compensation level requisite to what they are currently making, not less than. Um, so we feel very confident um, with their proposal. We feel very confident in our plan. Uh, we think we've achieved all of our goals um, that we set out to achieve. Um, the uh, the the department is certainly um, uh, aggressively on board with this plan. Uh, we think it really will pay dividends uh, for the long term health of the city and our ability to sustain ourselves as a a beautiful functioning um, community. I, so here is the plan moving forward. If the board uh, sees the evidence provided tonight or the data provided tonight and says, okay, this this makes sense. This is kind of hitting all the marks that we wanted to hit. Uh, then we would bring the vendor back at the next work session um, to give a presentation about their service, what that would look like, uh, who would be responsible for the account, how customer service would work, you know, what the schedules would look like, so on and so forth. Um, so that uh, you get an idea of who we might be working with. So that that's, that's how we want to do it. You know, I'm I'm free to take any, any questions that any of you might have. But you know, this is the culmination of a lot of discussion over a course of a year and a half. Uh, and because we believe that we approached this the right way, we're very confident in the recommendation that we're making to you.
Well, I just started, I mean, I know you put a lot of effort into it, so thank you. And I know that this has been something, can't see Marcel, but hey, there, I know um, the lights right in front of your face, but um, and I know this is something you put a lot of thought into yourself, appreciate that. Um, so I just want to say thanks first of all, I want to hear from you guys. Seems to think.
I mean, there was concerns that you know, sanitation and yard waste service fees would go up. So to have it go down is is uh, seems like a a huge win. And then seems like the only kind of concession is just um, once weekly pickup. So I mean, it seems like a
Which, I mean, we're now three people in the house instead of five, but even when we have five, we only needed once a week.
When you have recycling.
I mean, uh, I'm not sure what you gotta do to need, need, truly need twice a week, but some people do, I suppose, but we had five people at one time, three kids and we never needed once a week, I mean, ever. I don't think that we put it out the second time usually.
I mean, I'd see, I'd see past that for for savings per year. I mean, that's.
So that's one thing I also failed to mention is the commercial side of this. Um, if you all recall, in twenty twenty, we revamped the commercial sanitation program that we offer and tried to dial in the cost of that to an actual cost. Uh, and then we would um, we would give our local businesses um, or commercial properties the opportunity to opt in or out of that service as a part of their business license uh, renewal each year. And uh, we felt pretty confident that we got the cost of that service right. We asked the proposal, proposers to bid, you know, on those products as well. Um, and Arrow's costs and our costs are pretty much exactly in alignment, uh, which also provided me an extra level of confidence because I, we did some good research on how much it would cost. So we knew that number fairly well, um, and they they were right on it. They're also um, they're also willing to to allow businesses to either contract for three day a week pickup or five day a week pickup. Uh, and we give our businesses multiple options. Right now, it's either one day or four days, but this would be three days or five days. Uh, and they're also, they also bid commercial recycling. Um, so um, the, the, I think that the commercial, the, the, the service won't um, be decreased at all on the commercial side. If anything, it actually increases from one to four to three to five. Uh, so I think our business community, especially at the 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 rate proposed, will um, be happy to continue service uh, through the city um, if if we contract out.
Yeah, I was just gonna clarify with keeping the the yard waste in house, that would, while we certainly encourage people to uh, bag or can their leaves if they can, it's still an option not to do that since we're keeping it in.
Yes, so all of the vendors proposed to collect yard waste too.
Sure.
If required bagging.
Okay.
And that was one of the reasons that we uh, thought it wise to keep the service in house. Uh, is because when we first kind of started talking about this, we heard over and over again that, hey, we love our yard waste service. Um, so uh, yes, by us retaining yard waste service, the service will change from the resident's perspective.
Okay.
It'll actually just get better.
Yeah.
Because we'll be able to do it quicker and with newer equipment.
Okay, and and I also think with the zones that have been implemented, it's been fantastic. It's, at least for me personally, at least I know, hey, I gotta get my leaves out. I'm gonna do it this week, I gotta do it now. So um, I I think, I think that's been good. So I'm happy to hear that that yard waste pretty much stays as is.
I mean, I, I think you did hit all the marks and I mean, all the data and research that went into this, Marcel and whoever else helped, I mean, really a lot of work and and it's obvious and it's great to have all of these precise numbers to help us in our decision. Yeah, I, I'm very happy about keeping uh, the yard waste service. I think most residents that I talk to feel like that is an invaluable service. And I wanted to just point out one other thing about that. Guys, we plant trees on our verges and we love our trees, like I said earlier. We expect residents to help us by raking up the leaves that those trees drop and bundling them so that we can pick them up. I mean, if we start asking residents to start bagging all the tree cities' leaves off of their trees, that's not smart. So I'm, I'm very happy with where this is going and I would like to hear from Arrow and I would also like to hear from residents, you know, feedback on what folks think about this proposal. Yes. You know, feedback on what folks think about this proposal. Yes.
So, uh, I like this. Thank you, um, everyone who had a hand in, uh, you know, researching and doing the legwork and putting this together. Uh, the, I, I think it makes sense. It, uh, you know, comes out, uh, two hundred and twenty-three dollars annual savings, uh, terrific. Uh, the one, uh. Issue that, uh, I'd like, well, it's not an issue, it's just something that I would urge to reconsider. It was, I'm not sure why public works would be responsible for janitorial services, emptying trash and.
Uh, so that. So, one of the normal public works functions in cities is facilities maintenance. Um, meaning, you know, replacing light bulbs, um, you know, apply, fixing appliances if, if we can. Um, handling, you know, just odd jobs around the facility. Uh, typically that includes janitorial services. Um, the reason we contracted out, it used, janitorial services used to be completed by our public works department.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
Yeah, we contracted it out because we didn't have the time to allocate to, to do it appropriately. And we believe that through this new plan, we will now have the time to allocate to do it appropriately. And that would save us the twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars that we currently contract out for. And that, and, and. It also allows us to respond acutely. Our janitorial services only come once a week. At the end of the week on Friday, um, so we're paying, you know, a, a, a significant amount of, of money for limited service. Um, and we feel like not only can we save that money, but the service would improve because we could take care of. Um, you know, vacuuming and mopping, uh, easily ourselves.
Yeah, um, I, I still, uh, you know, it doesn't, uh, quite seem, uh. Uh, logical to me, but, um, you know, and if we look at that, uh, twenty-three thousand dollars, what do we say, uh? Sixteen hundred homes roughly. Households.
Sixteen forty.
Sixteen forty. Comes out to about, uh, less than fourteen dollars, uh, per household. Spread over a year, that's a dollar and change a month. I would, uh, recommend keeping that. I know that, uh, if, uh, if light bulbs go out or whatever happens. Um, you know, certainly we're not gonna wait until. Uh, the end of the week, uh, for them to come in and fix that. I'm assuming that. That's taken care of, uh, immediately. So I'm not, uh.
Well, we can't charge. Households for the janitorial service as part of the sanitation fund.
Right.
Um, so if, if we were to retain that contract.
Mm-hmm.
It would go on the general fund side.
Okay.
And it could be absorbed within the existing budget. Um, we're just recommending to you guys that it's actually, uh, inefficient use of funds.
Uh, outside of that, I like the plan, uh, but I do want to make, uh, you know, that observation.
What, why do you not like having it Lionel? I mean, you, you, you said you don't like it, but you haven't explained why you don't like it.
Uh, I just, uh, think that it's, uh, too low level work for public works to be doing. Um, I think that kind of thing, uh, you know. Uh, emptying, uh, you know, office trash cans, dusting, that kind of thing. Not seeing that as a function of public works. I know it was in the past. Uh, however, a lot of things changed, uh, from the past. And I don't believe that's, uh, something that public work should be doing. That's my view. I thought I'd make a note.
I mean, um, Patrick, when, when you were going through these, uh, numbers and, and considering. Removing the janitorial, um, contracts, I, I assume you, you did that with feedback from our own public works department, right?
Yes.
And so it seems like, when, when you were doing that, were you, were they in agreement with?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, so, uh. I mean, I have no questions. Uh. So what's next?
So, I think between now and the time to. Uh.
The lights.
Between now and the time when we would need to sign a contract. Which is by March first, so a month and a half. Um.
Get ready.
Between now and then, we'll have two more public opportunities to discuss this. Um, I would like to take the next meeting, like I said, the opportunity to bring that recommended vendor in. Uh, so that you can understand more about their company and the services they will provide and how it will work. And so you can build trust, because even though I'm recommending this to you, I don't want y'all to make a decision unless you feel like you can trust. The contractor, because it's a, you know, it's a significant contract and a potential relationship that we would like to have for a long time.
Is it a one year?
That we, we, that's subject to negotiation, but, uh, what I'm saying is that, um. You know, I'll want y'all to get to know them. Uh, so that would be what I would recommend is the next step. Uh, so you would also give the public an opportunity to get to know them. Uh, and then once that's completed, at the following meeting, you deliberate and, 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 and. Make a decision based on all the feedback you've heard over the past month and all of the questions you've had answered by either staff or a potential vendor.
Well, I like that. Um, I think it gives a. You know, instead of just voting on it next time. And we'll just take it from that meeting and see what's next after that.
That's right.
Okay, I, I just. I, I feel like this is kind of a big decision for us as a board. Uh, and I think taking a little, well, taking as much time as necessary is appropriate, so. But again, I appreciate everything you put into this. I know it hasn't come easily and I know it's a lot of. Personal side to it and a lot of considerations, uh. Thank you. And, um, yeah, got nothing.
I, I have one other question. Patrick, great presentation. I mean, you went through it so carefully and, you know, easy to understand. Is there any way to just very generally? Get it out there a little bit more? You know, cities considering this option, which would do this, this, this.
Taking this.
Okay.
And get into a user-friendly, uh, educational material fees.
If that's all I need to know.
I just felt, I felt for the purposes of this conversation. Doing it in the fashion I did, I wanted us to really understand what was going on better than a PowerPoint that was, yeah.
As long as.
Solid state.
People who need to go somewhere and at least just get the salient points. Right.
It's gonna be on the, the e-newsletter.
We'll probably pump it out through all of our mediums.
Okay.
So, you know, E-news, social media, um, it'll have a prominent place on the website.
Any plans on like, um, non-social media? Or I know there's a lot of residents that. May not be as in touch with social media, electronic delivery and all that.
Households are actually subscribers to our E-newsletter. Um, so, well, I think we, we're between the two. The E-nos and social media, we, we're really able to get the message out.
Of course, we also have indicators before.
We do. Yes.
Thank you. Um, and I just appreciate the general just constantly trying to, you know. Make our process better, make how we do things better. Just staying efficient, staying lean. I like it. So, uh, are we all good up here?
Morgan.
Alright, so next step, as Patrick said, just to reiterate. Next week or next week, next meeting, we're going to bring in the vendor Arrow to do a presentation. Will be no vote on this next time. Make that clear. Uh, and we'll take it from there, so.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, do we, do we get public comment on this?
Uh, well, not a work session, but public comments next, so, there you go.
Alright, public comment, Mr. Maslow.
Oh, my favorite. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yes, Mr. Over.
Questions, uh, in the, in this, um, program. What happens with the special pickups for the people that they can't do? And also, uh, in discussions with the recycling, uh, that by chance also include, uh, plastic bags?
No, no, uh, if we want to, we try. Um, it, it's a really logistically difficult thing to do because it has to be separate. Um. And, um, in fact, the company who we partnered with to do the pilot program. Uh, has shifted their focus away from residential collection to, uh, business to business collection. Anyway, uh, that, that's the answer to that. The answer to your first question though, is that special pickups will become cheaper. Uh, right now, um, it costs us fifty dollars per pickup. Uh, the, the, um. Vendor has proposed a cost of six dollars and twenty-nine cents per pickup or six dollars of forty-six. Uh-huh. Special pickups is bulk waste, so nine, nine garbage can waste. Yeah, sixteen and some change.
Thank you, thank you. Even, physically, it.
That service, that, yes, all of the vendors were cognizant of the fact that there are, um. Persons who are unable to bring their stuff to the curb and they can use the same process we use now, which is, you know. Fill out a form and, and verify and then we handle it.
Oh, do you have a question? Okay.
You know, it's a bit, uh. Cities expensive, we did, and we know that, we like that, listening to lead city, that needs services, we've got our police. Um, sanitation, we've got a level of service that is beyond question. It's a wonderful thing about the city, it's one of the reasons why we're continuing to live. Uh. One pickup, two pickups, probably doesn't matter, but it is an elite service. It is something that matters to some people. Probably. Probably not as meaningful as, uh, this. One thing. Um. The staffing side is one of the more important things to me. So I like that there's allocation for moving. The guys that work here now. To the contract that would be continuing the service. That's awesome. There any guarantee of them staying in the area? One thing to have them hired by Arrow, but is, is Arrow going to deploy those guys? That is an elite service that I really like. No one's been walking around my neighborhood, no one's been bought private cars. You know, I, I value our public service for that reason.
Yes, that, obviously that would have to be negotiated as part of a contractual agreement, but. Um, the vendor has, um, indicated that as their intention.
But. Well, that had the impact on street park and stuff like that.
I don't believe so. We do, we do, I believe so, that. Yeah, so, um. The, the vendor is proposing to use, um, some smaller vehicles. Um. That we believe will be able to navigate city streets, um, in existing condition.
Well. Except to increase. The service that we have in office satisfy the, the costs and the operating expenses is gonna be around seven-ten per household. We're currently spending around five ninety-six. And the, the proposed thing brings us down to a two, two ninety, they're about.
Three seventy-three.
Three seventy-three, so we got two, two ninety. Okay. Difference.
Two twenty-three, two twenty-three.
Well, it's like more like three hundred and twenty-three if you considered that we were gonna have to raise the fees to seven-ten. So.
Household. Really, so. Say.
Mm-hmm.
A little bit more.
This is not a save, this isn't, uh, I, I want to be clear. This is a reduction in the sanitation fee, which is located in the sanitation fund, which is an enterprise fund. It's not tied to the millage. What I tried to illustrate how, was, so, those funds have to be used for sanitation purposes, right? Um, so what I was just trying to illustrate was that amount of savings per household is roughly equivalent to what a mill costs for each household. Yeah. Correct.
That's good, good thought. Um, great change for the purpose. So restaurants, um. Dumpsters, stuff like that, is that handled separately, county, is that? For Arrow?
No, yeah, so as I stated, um, we currently allow commercial properties to either use our service or contract for it themselves. We will still continue that practice. Uh, the vendor has, uh, proposed multiple commercial options. A three-day or a five-day, which is increased service from what we currently provide. Uh, at relatively the same cost. I mean, it's, it's. I don't know specifically whether it's like a forty cent difference or not, but I mean, it really comes out roughly the same amount.
Save money from assistance, it's a really important. Good job, they love me, dude. Keep it up.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Alright. Other questions, comments? The one. Okay. Hey, Shelley. We can't hear you yet. Are you muted?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright. Hi, everybody. Um, I missed the part about who is doing the recycling. Is that Arrow as well?
Yes.
Okay, will they be providing a bin?
Yes.
Okay, um, I just think that if we encourage more recycling, we'll have less going through the landfill. And there's, you know, I walk the streets every day, I'm not a streetwalker, but, um, there's so many people that. Put their recycling in plastic bags that are not recyclable. Is there a way that we can communicate to the citizens that we can't do that?
Yes.
Okay, and my, my other comment was, um, my screen, that your numbers were reversed too, so. I don't know what's going on, but I couldn't read them.
Time to figure that out. Sorry about that.
No worries, I knew, I mean, you know, I get to just, we're gonna save money, it's all good.
What?
We got the best.
Okay.
Thank, thank you.
See ya. That's it? Okay. Alright, seeing one last chance. Any questions out there?
The, that was for ten employee, retaining ten employees, how many are there now?
Okay, so we have nineteen approved positions. Seventeen of which are filled by full-time employees. Uh, two of which are currently filled by seasonal employees. Uh, we didn't fill the two vacancies full-time because we didn't know the direction of the program and didn't want. You know, somebody to start here and then we change it on a dime, so it would be seven persons.
Okay. Uh, we'll see, no other questions. I would like to bring it back up here. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? So move, that was Mike, do I have a second? Ask Lisa, all of her say aye.
Aye, aye, we are adjourned.
Thank you, awesome.